All right, so today is Wednesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty five. The time is now three oh one P M and we are going to start this council work session. And number one on the agenda is clearing confusion, setting the record in fact straight. We did not have any responses for the last visitor comment. And now we are going to open up a visitor comment. So now's the time for visitor comments. The visitor comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes. The League of Oregon Cities has provided guidance that visitor comments shall be limited to city business items placed on the agenda. Other than public hearings, we will be formalizing this guidance. Oh, never mind, back to this. Digress, let's take a step back, different form. This is now is the time for public comments. The visitor comment period is the essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. The council will take all input into consideration, however, an observance of the Oregon open, excuse me, meeting laws, it isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator, city recorder, taking notes of action if needed and will follow a few. Therefore, it's important that you provide your contact information, the sign in sheet at the back of the room. And with that, we will open it up for public comment. Please keep your time to three minutes or less. That was rough, I apologize for that. I was, I was reading off my computer versus reading off the, my nicely laminated script here.
You get it so right if I sit.
Yes, please, and state your name for the record.
Done. My name is Nancy Whitney. Many years of my life, for your information, for many years of my life, I was heavily involved in attempting to put a stop to the theft and waste of taxpayer dollars and other offenders perpetrated by elected officials. Columbia County and St. Helens. And I am reading because I am, my memory is not as good as it used to be. But the other personal information I want you to know is that I do not do Facebook. It did not take me long to discover that Facebook was primarily nothing but gossip and lies. However, others do send me information when they hope they might get a rise out of me. Well, this time they succeeded. Brady Preheim is my nephew. Mayor Jennifer Massey has expounded numerous lies about my nephew on Facebook, has attempted to shut him down when speaking in public, and has followed him down the street just outside this meeting room, screaming and attempting to threaten him. He laughs about it, I can't, I don't think it's funny. The Facebook lie by Massey, which finally got my attention, is the accusation that Brady is peeking in her windows. That is one totally personal, totally unacceptable, and totally a potential second lawsuit. Please do not let it enter your minds that Brady had anything to do with this opinion I'm presenting before the city council today. I taught him everything he knows and I know how to write. I expect I'm reaching the end of my speaking period, so I will stop. However, if you care to do so, though, sitting in the audience, I have brought copies of what I've said today for your personal preusal. Additional material will soon be appearing online at ColumbiaCountyDirectory.com. Thank you.
Next public comment, please.
Steve Kocas. I read the agenda today and I found two disturbing things. There'll be a report by Jacob about the buildability in this town and it reports done by a consulting company, reports hundreds of acres of industrial property that's available. And we have a great two miles of waterfront that's available. Both of those statements are a lie. It was surprising that the company that, the consultants that did that, did not read the D E Q reports that said no dredging of the channel, no removal of toxic waste. As we know, the court has been going twenty five years to try to get some of that property in action and has been stopped by the state. The number of brownfields that we cannot build on was not mentioned, nor was the fact that D E Q, state agency, first gave early last year what had to be done for the pre-sold plant to be turned into an industrial site. D E Q later that year said that would not happen. So, a number of details of that report were basically cut down by other state reports and other state operations. In fact, over the last number of years, D E Q has basically ended the industrialization of St. Helens. That's the first comment. Second comment, is there any comments last meeting? I read, have cheat here, twenty some items. I looked at the minutes, nothing that I had said got to be in the record or the meeting record that's supposed to be accepted by the council today. Absolutely a farce of what was put in there. And if that is accepted, when it comes to acceptance of minutes, I think you all have to be considered liars. This is what I said.
You got it, you got me too.
Okay, good. So, that's what I wrote here, about three lines in the minutes. We're not telling the truth on our industrialization, on our minutes. Everything that's on that sheet basically has been presented by many people over the years. Thank you.
All right, next public comment, please.
Very pretty. Again, I'd like to thank Chief Hoag for his work and for changing the atmosphere and the attitude of the police and for his years of dedication to the city. The process to hire him needs to be changed immediately. All of you are in, involved in a lawsuit regarding his employment status and a whistleblower complaint. And there are none of you that are qualified to make that selection because of that suit. You're basically using a similar process that we used to get Chief Greenway and gee, what could go wrong with that? It's clear to me that the city of St. Helens has a history of a bad ability to hire people, already people. What you need to do, you need to turn over the application outside A G R one and say nothing more. There are professionals that hire for a living. Let them decide on the criteria and the interviews or whatever they're gonna do and come back with a recommendation. The city should not be involved in it. I also want to comment about the investigations that you need to call against Ms. Massey. In the interest of accountability and transparency, there should be no one that is more willing or anxious to have an investigation than you. So do it, it's pretty simple. And I promise you that if we find out that everybody but you is a liar, I will be the first person that will come and apologize to you. On the other hand, if we find out that no, in fact, everybody is lying, including Joe Hoag, Greenway and some of his reports, some former police officer, you know, the information we have in that report, which is damaging, then of course you should immediately resign. In fact, I think you should resign now ahead of time because I think we're pretty certain. You also need to release the full and unredacted report along with the supplemental reports. In addition, do the additional investigation into you. You are not going to survive this crisis. Tonight on Five and Six on Coin TV, there will be an additional story about the city of St. Helens. It's unfortunate that we keep being in the news, but we are. Listen to it, I don't know what they're gonna say, but it should be, it should be interesting. All of you need to recuse yourself on anything to do with the police, plain and simple. And I do would also like that the, in preparation for removing the mayor, I would hope that you would, well, thank you for being a little bit more subtle this time.
But your time is up.
Yeah. Would hope that you would vote a new council president, yeah.
Next public comment, please. Online, yeah. Steve Toski is the first one, okay. Steve, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you restate your name for the record though, please?
I'm Steve Toski, citizen of St. Helens. I could not make the meeting today. And it's with a heavy heart that I'm making these comments for the public record, for the benefit of our people. In October of twenty twenty four, then acting chief Hoag reported what was a crime that he believed that was being committed by then candidate Jennifer Massey, conspiring with Chief Greenway for the police to hold a mini-strike and to go on, to go off of twenty-four hour patrol, which was very publicly announced in October. The crime is called corruption of process. And I've reviewed a lot of evidence in this and I believe there is substantial evidence that Jennifer Massey is guilty of that crime and should be prosecuted by the Department of Justice. And the punishment for that crime would be loss of office. Jennifer Massey should not have been involved in any decisions involving Chief Hoag, who had made the report against her, and she should not be involved in any decisions whatsoever involving the St. Helens Police Department as being a direct violation of the St. Helens Ethics Code fifteen zero nine. If we've learned anything from the St. Helens High School students, it is that we want to have a city where crimes are prosecuted and not covered up. And that is what we need to do. This, this is a prosecution that occur, should occur in the court of law, not in public opinion. But along the lines of potentially covering up, I have made many legal requests for information involving these allegations and have been stonewalled. The city council needs to be clear that they want all of the information sent to the public because right now the information is being withheld. And if I don't get it by Friday per my public records requests, I will be bringing legal action against the city to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next person, hold on for a second, like Kathy, redo. It's Adam. Adam, uh, sorry. Oh, yeah. Okay, uh, state your name for the record, please, can you hear us?
I can hear you, this is Adam St. Pierre. Just a couple of quick things, you know, Steve just contradicted himself, it shouldn't happen in the court of public opinion, so why are we releasing the records for one? But from my knowledge, I think the person most excited to have a real investigation would be Jennifer Massey because I know her pretty well. And anybody who's actually paid any attention to what's going on with the police department, especially the council, which I think they have a real interest in this, is the police union, the acting chief Hoag, prior chief Greenway, they've been coming back to the council since like twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, saying that it was imminent that we were gonna lose twenty-four hour coverage if we didn't get additional staffing. How anybody can claim that they didn't see this coming is very ironic. But hey, you know, why let facts get in the way of a good conspiracy and a good, you know, story? And also, my second comment I want to make is, you know, to Brady Preheim's aunt. It's kind of funny that you don't believe a thing you see on Facebook, yet the only person who posted anything on Facebook about the interaction between Jennifer Massey, myself, and your nephew was your nephew or his cohort, one of the two. Because there was only three people who actually saw the incident and three people that actually know what happened. And your nephew came across the street and, you know, made, tried to make verbal contact with myself and, you know, Mayor Massey, and he went out of his way to try to be a nuisance. And she basically told him she didn't have time for him, that, you know, she, he needed, he needed to get over his obsession with her. So, you know, there's always two sides to every story and you might want to not believe what your nephew is putting on Facebook. So, aside from that, I think counsel for what you do.
He wasn't the one.
Not time for.
I don't care.
Respect, please just respect and disquorum. Uh, was Adam done? Adam, are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other people online, Kathy? No, okay, perfect. All right, so we are going to go into discussion topics. So, number two on the list is request to support the new Amani Center building. That you would like to come up here and introduce yourselves. Try it, it may not be. It's a second.
No, he's gonna put up a slideshow, we're gonna try and put up a slideshow. Um, in the interim, I'm Plato, I'm the deputy director at the Amani Center. We are Columbia County's Child Abuse Assessment Center. We do intervention for cases of child abuse and neglect. And we also are now working in prevention and mental health around cases of abuse and neglect. All right, yay, thank you. For, I'm guessing forward.
Yes.
So we are, I think, I sent stuff out, you guys have a pretty hefty packet of information on our project. We've already gotten conditional use permit for the piece of property that we now own on McNulty, the corner of McNulty and Industrial Way, and are at the point of having plans already, ready and to go through the permitting process to pull permit to start building. The entire project is a five point two million dollar project and it is not working, Kathy.
Let's see. Oh, there goes.
Oh, wow, I just have to be patient, not that, I'm not that. We've been around since two thousand, we are celebrating our twenty-fifth anniversary this year. We have seen thousands of children over the years in intervening with child abuse. That is through mostly assessment services, which means a medical evaluation, forensic interview that is admissible in court, and then victim advocacy services where we have victim advocates who are helping families and children navigate the court system and also referral services and resources in the community where they, they may be lacking in, in their life. So that can be food insecurity, that can be housing, that could be a lot of things that happen to do with, with social supports of, of families. I've already kind of told you what we do, but we are also now working on mental health support for kids. We just launched our mental health program this month. So not only are we doing intervention of interview, of abuse, but also helping kids towards healing and recovery, recovery with mental health, trauma-informed mental health. I really got ahead of myself. Um, I only have fifteen minutes, so. We are, I'm, the national average is that one in, one in seven children are impacted by abuse and neglect each year. We know that, we know that to be a low estimate because of the disclosure rate of children. They don't, not all children disclose, so this is a, this is a, based on what we can actually mathematically come up with, but we know that more children have been impacted by abuse and neglect. And we are there to support them when they are, are brave enough to come through and let people know what's going on in their lives.
Sorry, I have to do something. I may have to do the slides.
It might, oh, were you doing that for me?
I don't know where, that'd be funny. So, yeah, I pointed at you.
We have multidisciplinary team across, across our county. We provide the support for law enforcement, so city of St. Helens detectives use our services to help support their cases and decide if it's a prosecutable case. We support all law enforcement agencies across the county, including C C S O and the district attorney's office when they do decide to go to court. Our evidence is unbiased and neutral and child-friendly. So we exist to be able to make it so that kids don't have to tell all of those people their story every single time, that's ten, that's the minimum. They tell their story one time and then that information is shared across those agencies so that kids don't have to re-traumatize themselves with probably the most awful thing that they've ever experienced in their life. Right now, we are in a three thousand square foot building on Columbia Boulevard as part of like what we would all call Main Street in our area. Probably not the most efficient use of the Main Street space in our community. We'd like to see, you know, retail business, that sort of thing in there. Also not the most trauma-informed space because people coming to services at our agency are parking on the second busiest street in our town. The highway being the busiest. And if anybody knows their car, they know that they're getting, they're getting services in a place that should be more confidential. Our goal is to build an eight thousand square foot building on the corner of McNulty and Industrial over between the Oregon State Police Office and Lower Columbia Engineering's Office and Control Solutions. And double our capacity to be able to see kids. Right now, we can see about two hundred and fifty to three hundred kids a year at maximum capacity. This will double our capacity, providing two separate forensic interview spaces. It will allow us to take on, take in crisis cases for people walking in off the street. I invite you all to come see my current space, but right now, if a family comes in off the street while we're already serving another family, we have to house them in places that aren't trauma-informed, aren't really comfortable and aren't really the best places for kids to be hanging out because they're hanging out next to my copying machine or in my office manager's office or in a conference room where we have three people sharing that space for their workspace right now. So, and if any of us need to get to the copying machine, we have to walk outside to go around the building to get to that. So it's not the most efficient use of space. We currently have thirty, thirty bodies on staff, right around nineteen F T E and three thousand square foot space there. And then we have just started leasing another space for a mental health team. It's not conducive for those folks to be working together in like our assess, our mental health team in, works interactively with our assessment team. So they have to drive back and forth between spaces right now to be able to do that. This new space will be able to house everybody, all of our team, and have space for our multidisciplinary team meetings every week, which includes D H S, law enforcement, the DA's office, and all of the social services supports that families might need, including mental health. We've seen a rise in thirty percent of demand for, over the last five years. Our highest year was twenty nineteen. It dipped during the pandemic due to mandatory reporters not seeing kids and not having the ability to then make reports. But if you look in the child abuse welfare data book, you can see that child abuse cases were ticking up all the way to two thousand nineteen, dropped down in two thousand twenty, or sorry, yeah, two thousand twenty, and then started ticking, immediately started ticking back up again from there. So it is critical that we stay ahead of the curve and not, not, not be able to respond to provide services to kids in our community. It already talked about how we would be able to double our services for victim advocacy and support services. We would be able to put everybody in the same space and really make use of an efficient team. We have our donation of land that was given to us. We have our shovel ready, it's shovel ready and plans that are ready to go. And really what this tells the baseline and the difference between what we can do now and what we can do with a new building. Kathy has a copy of this now, so if anybody wants to review it, you can look at it with more scrutiny. We have our fundraising goals, we do have funding identified. We have recently, our timeline has changed a little bit, it's a little bit further drawn out than we wanted it to be. We're still ambitious and trying to get this broken ground by summer, which is why the permits have been submitted. And this is why I'm here today, is to let St. Helens, the city of St. Helens know that last year we saw two hundred and forty-eight children, eighty-four of those kids were from St. Helens. Costs over fifty-two hundred dollars for us to see a child. They are, they are not charged for that. Either their insurance or Oregon Health Plan picks up the bill on that, not always in full. If it's private insurance, it is definitely not close to what it costs to support a child. And we, right now, don't receive any money from the city. It is, we are mandated by the state to exist. And we get about seventeen to twenty percent of our funding from the state. We get another thirty percent-ish from the feds, used to get thirty percent-ish from the feds. That is obviously kind of up in the air right now. And so we're kind of waiting to see what's gonna happen with that. And we just lost one point two million dollars from congressionally directed spending that was allocated to us last year. And because of the continuing resolution in March, all bills that were passed through Congress that were pending a budget approval have been stripped out of this year's budget. And so if we want to see that one hundred, that one million dollars, we have to go through the process again, get vetted, get submitted through subcommittee and, you know, beat out everybody else who has now reapplied for that funding. We're trying to make up that money where we can. And we're trying to maybe disperse that across all people, smaller, smaller amounts to, to reach that goal. And I am here to ask the city of St. Helens, in your budget crisis as well, to consider what it, what it might mean to make a meaningful contribution to our, to our organization, to this project. Whether that is any sort of fee relief, whether that is out of your. The the council's discretionary budget, whether that is finding out about a funding opportunity that you think. Oh, we can't do anything, but this is a great partnership for the Amani Center. Arpa funds, we didn't get any Arpa funds, you know, sent down to us from. Anyone, that so, anyone across the county. And so if those opportunities come available, we're open to, we are really. Feisty in going after things and if we are provided an opportunity, we are going to follow up on that opportunity. And we would like to see the City of St. Helens be a leader in support. Across everyone, but especially across government agencies. We'd like to be able to like tout you in front of some other folks and say, hey, the City of St. Helens is in, what, how about you come along too? And I think that's all I have to say.
For everything that you do.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, I read the information you sent over ahead of time and it was very informational. Again, what you guys do is extremely important to our littles and you know, out there, so.
And we know we have a lot going on in our community right now, we did not plan to get into prevention right this quickly. We planned to have a new building before we got into prevention, but the community situation has caused us to need to get into prevention. A lot faster, we're currently hiring a prevention coordinator, we did get some funds shifted to us from the county to be able to support that. And we're able to shift some existing funds around system of care finances. To put towards prevention as well, those are short term, they're not long term funds. But it's obvious that our community needs that and we're ready to respond to that.
Is that from, I heard you guys mentioned yesterday in the ribbon cutting ceremony, that some funds came from Columbia Pacific CCO.
So Columbia Pacific CCO helped us a long term mental health program. Had not, not, not anything to do with prevention, yet their next grant cycle opens in May.
That sound like that might be long term, that funding from the CCO?
The mental health funding from the CCO, yes. However, I will say that the funding that comes through the CCO is also funneled through Oregon Health Plan. Which is then Medicaid funding and if that's cut at a federal level or if the state is. Has fallout with the federal government and there's the, and they withhold any sort of Medicaid funding to the state of Oregon, that's going to trickle down to us as well.
No, we'll get to this, John, see what we can do.
We have our community grant program and I, I felt like somebody from the Amani Center spoke to during a lipstick meeting about it, maybe it was you?
It was Amelia, I'm sure it was Amelia.
Okay, I would definitely recommend applying for that, but you know, that's, you know. I was gonna say, it's definitely not what you guys are looking for as far as like long term goals, but I, I. You said anything, so sending that your way too and then, you know, having a chance to maybe discuss some sponsorship, maybe like during Halloween Town or something like that. That you guys can, you know, maybe do some fundraising for as a part of that, I think there are opportunities. And I think the Amani Center is a wonderful program and I know our police use it and I know lots of people in the community really rely on your guys' services. And honestly, I think it's, it wasn't a well known fact that the Amani Center maybe struggles financially. I think a lot of people, when they think about the Amani Center, they think of just wonderful program, they always have great fundraising, everybody really supports them. So I think it's kind of eye opening for you to come forward with that and and that gives me something to think about, so.
I think it's also difficult in the fact that our agency is the Amani Center, which is is Columbia County Child Abuse Assessment Program. Most people think that we're associated as a, as a county entity and we are not, we are a private nonprofit.
Similar request for organizations like Habitat Humanity have come and asked for relief from their billing permit fees and SDCs and waivers. Of that nature and. There have been instances, we've done that over the past, the SDCs, system development charges, when we waive those have to be made up from some other. Source, so that's a challenge for us. Building these, you have the department. This has been a really challenging year.
With actually multiple people in, on your staff who have like, they've been very open about. You're gonna be asking for, this is a big ask and I, and I don't, I want you to understand that I know it's a big ask. I also would not be doing my agency or my constituents well if I didn't come and make the ask, so that's why I'm here today.
We appreciate you and your testimony today.
Yes, thank you.
Great, we are. Into number three, presentation bar, Arcadia Paper Mills, LLC.
I'm listed here as the point here, but I'm certainly not Arcadia Paper Mills.
I'm a little confused by that.
Craig Allen, representing them.
Hi, I'm Craig Allen with Arcadia Paper Mills. Thank you for inviting us. Just in general, I guess we haven't had a chance to meet Mayor Massey, congratulations on your election. And the rest of the board, we appreciate all the support we've received over the past year. As usual, St. Helens meetings are quite interesting. And also like to say that Joe Hoag has been involved with helping us resolve some issues of. Theft and vandalism of the mill and we appreciate his support. At this point in time, we're very happy with some of the progress we've made with the DEQ. Currently, we've reached agreement on some legal documents that have to be presented publicly, May first regarding. Perspective purchaser agreement, this has been the number one thing that has concerned us with reopening the mill. The prospective purchaser agreement will give us indemnification against past environmental issue at the mill. It requires us to spend a significant amount of money and preventative measures. While some of the issues are resolved. And like I said, May first, that goes up for public comment, we expect that to go through without any issues. And then move forward rapidly with what we need to do to restart the paper mill. At this time, we've got six employees, full time employees on staff, working to commission all of the assets at the mill. Going through just each system, resolving damage that has occurred over the last year and a half, two years since the mill was shut down. We're making good progress, we're happy with where we're going. We currently have orders in place to replace the equipment that Cascades took from the property when they exited the mill. That's all going quite well and all of our deliveries should come in within the next two months, so we're happy with that as well. That's moving forward. And the next week or so, we'll be working with PGE to go through and add. Cold shutdown of the substation, resolve any issues that they have with the substation and providing power to the mill. I know that's been a concern and topic of discussion within the community that is being addressed right now. And we expect that to go through without any issues as well. Other than that, you know, we're just, we're making progress towards restarting the mill. We look forward to working with the community and the people in the community and supporting the community. We're working with local vendors and every aspect that we can. More our rights, working with local machine shops and other suppliers. And we've been very, very happy with the support we've received, so. It's brief, but that's where we're at today.
I'm happy to hear all that, if, if you can, when do, when would you, if nothing goes, if everything goes the way it's planned. Do you have an estimated opening or start?
Right now, we're just continuing to hire people and commission everything, our, our goal at this point is, and and through the processes. The council was supported our last extension to be able to commission the mill. So that we weren't behind the ball once, we did clear all of the environmental hurdles that we need and that's going very, very well. So we expect that once we clear our path with the DEQ to rapidly start to go back up. Without having to spend a lot of time and effort and, and going through the processes that we're going through now, so. I wanted to start up make paper faster than anybody here, especially in light of the current political turmoil. You know, this is gonna be a great benefit to the community, to our state and to the country. As far as being able to provide industry in the US with that's made product. Well, I believe that everybody supports, I don't believe that that's different, regardless of which party you tend to lean towards, so. I'm just really pleased with where we're at and I'll be happy, I, I have an ongoing debate with John about when we're going to do it. So we're racing to see whether we can get the downtown first or the mill open first. Tell me when the downtown's done, I'll tell you when the. I, I hope so, because I'd like to not have to dodge everything when I come down here, so.
When you drive down there, you're gonna start to see all those kids at the softball field, I don't know if you've seen them yet, but. On your drive to the mill, you're gonna see all the families and everybody out there enjoying the sun.
Yeah, it, it has been great to see everybody and it's, it's, it's been nice to come back, it's been great to see the beautiful weather. And enjoy this and not have all the rain coming down while we're doing all of our work, so.
Appreciate you coming in today and just giving us the update in person, it's really helpful to have that kind of dialogue, so.
I would like to make a request, can I, I want to be down there when you guys start up and you get.
You can all be down there as long as we call a council meeting because we have a forum.
I just want to see the whole process and you explain it to me.
Cause there's no more pigeon poop that we have to walk around in.
We, we cleaned that up months ago, thank God. That's the first thing we cleaned up, Jennifer. Thank you very much, have a great day.
Yeah, I'm just, I'll be a stranger, come back.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Then number four is our monthly report on departments and divisions. So hopefully everybody read these. We had one that came in from Crystal, by the way, I would like to give a shout out to Crystal for the work on updating us. For the information on closures, it's so nice and helpful to have that when people ask us or answers, we can give them that information. So thank you for that, we also had one from Suzanne Bishop, hopefully you're feeling better today. We had one from interim police Chief Joe Hope and then Shawna dug it, does anybody have any questions? Okay, on the open items tonight, one of the things that I'm gonna bring up, I think is asking again if these are going well. If we need to change them at all as far as the time period, if everybody's happy, if staff's happy. I'll ask you guys, is this a cumbersome process, are you okay with this? I mean, I mean, we want, we want honest feedback, our goal is to try to, you know, try to, you know, alleviate some of the burden. And still give us information, so we are open for comments on how we can improve the process and still get information.
I, I know I've had a conversation with a couple of staff members who have brought up, maybe it'd be nice to move to like every other month. Quarterly, as a rotation, I know a few people feel like, they've said, like in reporting last time or this time. They felt like, oh my gosh, I have to prepare another report right away, like turn around and do another one right away, maybe like six a year or quarterly.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, everybody shaking their head over that. The way to go.
So that's something we should discuss tonight, that is like possibly doing it quarterly, if in fact, you know, there is something that was a hot topic that we could ask you to come in.
You guys always know that you can come forward at any point if there's something that you need guidance on.
We want the information, but we also don't want to create more work, we want to simplify it, so I think that that's a great thing to, for us to discuss tonight. Cause we certainly don't want that at all, so we appreciate the feedback. You guys good on putting that in agenda tonight to discuss, Kathy, you got that? Okay, well, I didn't have any questions on, read through it and kind of was comprehensive. I also thought about, I kind of echoed what Crystal said a little bit, it's like if you're doing this each, each month, then the, the reality is, is that. It's probably not gonna change much, right?
Overman is slow, right?
Painfully, so, so I think that that might, might work well, is maybe just quarterly. Okay, perfect, all right, look at making improvements, all right. Thank you for being here and you guys don't have to stay either, that was one of the things that came up before is if you want to, you're more than welcome, we love having you here, but it's more so. You don't have to give us the presentation and we just ask questions.
One thing I just can say for Suzanne and I is our summer stuff is getting ready to release, so please push it out. When is it released, Cameron and Krista have been working hard on a guide, so once we get that up and going, lots of fun stuff.
Can give us, or me, if you can give me little things to promote during my report, I'd be happy to do that. I like the positivity of that stuff, so if you have something that you can give me on a basis, please get it out there.
We'll get to you.
Thank you.
Good idea, Shawna.
All right, we are on number five, which is Belton Sewer Step System Capacity Study, this is all. Take two.
Sharon.
Hi Sharon.
Didn't take too much time. So I know that the last council meeting, there was some questions specifically from you, Councilor Hubbard, about the Belton. Projects, I just put together a quick few slides to kind of kind of catch you up to speed on what we're doing and the reason why we're doing this project now and why.
We don't have this, right? We don't have this in our packet.
So just starting with the project background, if you want to go to the next slide and the next one. So the Belton Sewer Step System, this is kind of the map of the line, the, the little yellow line that kind of snakes around the road. That's basically where that step system is, so basically it starts at Forest Park Drive and Belton, goes all the way up about maybe. Twelve hundred feet and then starts going through easements for about another five hundred feet. All the properties that are highlighted in yellow are the properties that are currently known to be connected to. Systems, so it's about eleven known properties that are connected. The areas that you see in red are potential areas that could connect to that system. So quite a big area. For that, and so if you go to the next slide, the system of course was built in nineteen ninety, it's a pressurized two inch pipe. That kind of goes through there, like I said, we have eleven known private sewer connections, we only know of eight pumps. Of where the eight pumps are, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of unknowns in this area.
Some question really quick before I get to, on the, we had eleven known, but what about the, in the red area, do we have any idea of how many potential?
As far as I know, no one in the red areas are connected.
Right, but what it'll look like for properties, is that like, how many, how many additional, yeah, how many lots?
It, it depends, I mean, they might subdivide it.
Subdivided, I mean, there's a certain, they've only subdivided so much. There's X amount of lots possible for.
I was looking for a worst case scenario.
And, and that's something that I don't know, that's kind of more like a question for the planner. So if you go to the next slide, of course, a step system, I know not, not everybody knows what it is, it's kind of a hybrid sewer system. Have properties that have kind of a septic tank, it falls in there and it pumps the effluent into. The two inch pipe which takes it down to the city's sewer system, so it's kind of like this hybrid system. Not usually used in for public sewers, very unusual for that. But it is cheaper in the short term, but in the long term, it's, it's not as cost effective. So if you go to the next slide, I just put on here all the drawbacks with the system, multiple points of maintenance. You have all these pumps and valves and everything going on, long term costs are higher for maintenance for both the city and for their private owners. More potentials for failure, jurisdictional confusion, so in the City of St. Helens. Our code states that the city owns the pumps and the lines going into the pump and everything like that. But the property owner is responsible for maintaining it, when you read it, the language in my opinion is a little vague and needs to be cleared up. I think that's a real dangerous area for us to, to be in here, quite frankly. So next slide, so the capacity study, so when the system was constructed. Um, so when the system was constructed, of course, the engineer record, um, they didn't provide us any um, capacity matrix of, hey, this is how much lines are connected. These are much more properties or how much more flow did this pipe can hold. So that's one of the problems there. Um, we've had developers, uh, come to us in the past and here I wanna connect to this. And we don't have the information in engineering that we are comfortable moving forward and telling someone they can connect to something that we don't know any information about. Um, there's also the question of, you know, we own those pumps and the lines and we don't know anything about them. Like I said, there's eleven. We only know where eight pumps are. Um, and we also don't know if there's any deficiencies in the system either. So this is a big unknown for an, a very unusual system that we have and this project basically is gonna give us more information. On, so we have this document that, hey, we know what's going on. Somebody calls us and we can actually speak about it intelligently.
You say we had other systems like this in the city?
This is the only step.
Okay, wanted to make sure, cause I started thinking about it.
We don't want any more of these, trust me.
Got it.
Um, so next slide, um.
Pumps are on the individual lots, so.
They are, um.
No community pump?
There's not a community pump, um, so they're all kind of on flow. Some of them are on easements and some aren't, so it's not.
Typically, they have to be pumped.
Yeah, it's not very consistent. From their tank, from their property.
Very far from the house, so typically they'd all be.
Yeah.
Location of the lot.
Yeah, but the city does own the pumps. It's kind of a weird.
Said it's a mess, that's what she's saying.
I won't, I'm, I'm not gonna even say who made the decision. I will shock myself. When we started looking into this, um. So we, could we go back one more? Yeah, okay, so I kinda wanted to go through each individual slide here on, as to why, um, we're gonna use a consultant to do this. So, um, specialized expertise and experience. Um, the consultant, of course, is gonna have that experience in doing step system studies. That's not something that we do here in, you know, in Public Works Engineering. Um, they have to do field surveys, um, for all the design calculations. They have to coordinate with property owners to obtain access, um, to their properties, to document the pumps, the condition of the pumps, the location of them. They have to do pressure monitoring, um, as part of the hydraulics, uh, monitoring. If we go to the next one. Um, so basically the hydraulic monitoring, um, is a important part of this study. Uh, the software alone for this, which is, was something that we don't have and we don't really need to have it for what we do here. It's probably like fifteen thousand to thirty dollars a year, right there, just for the software. Um, most of the consultants are already gonna have this, cause this is what they, what they do. Next slide, of course, um, in terms of time, resource and efficiency, we just don't have the capacity to do this in-house. We already lost, um, one FTE with Tim's retirement. Um, and so, um, it's basically three of us trying to cover, uh, everything and all of our projects. So we just don't have the time to do it. And the consultant, you know, they can complete that study in a much more cost-effective way and get us a good, a good study and a good plan instead of us kind of somewhat ragtagging it. Um, and so, and of course they'll give us an unbiased analysis, so, you know, um, and that's, I think that's a good thing for something like that, that, you know, it won't be us like, oh, I hate the system, so I don't want anybody connecting to it. We'll have a good document for that. So next steps, just a quick summary. So basically we have this two inch pressure, uh, sewer line, um, which we know very little about. We have, we have had developers expressed, um, interest in connecting to it. Um, and so it would be nice to be able to kind of talk to them and tell them, hey, uh, we can still, we can put five lines on here or twenty lines, I don't know. Um, and that we don't have the information we need right now to make a decision in regard to um, telling people whether they can connect to this line or not. Um, and we don't have the staff to do the work in-house. We just don't have the, the staff. So of course, on the evening session, um, we did, um, put the, the capacity study, um, to award the project to grailing engineers. We had two, um, our two proposals that were submitted. Um, the proposal team met, we decided on grailing. Um, when we meet with them after it's awarded, if you guys award it this evening, um, we're gonna work with them to refine the scope and the fee. So I know you mentioned the project budget. The project budget isn't set. Um, the way that this RFP was done, that fee will be set during the scoping, so we have the opportunity to scale it back or, you know, and do what we want with it.
Become a repair project then for the public works?
Um. No, this is just a study, so we don't plan on doing any repairs with this.
At the end of the study, you'll know what.
So at the end of the study, we'll know how much lines can connect to this, the condition of the pumps, the location of the pumps. We'll have maps of the system and where everything is.
So Council Hubbard, look at this as a roadmap to, like a master planning, right? We need to identify the problem first. Once we know that, we can tackle those on individual, you know, projects, small ones, public works can do. If it's larger, right, than a hundred K, uh, capacity resources, that will be contracted out. But this will tell us what we need to do for that area.
Yeah, and so there might be, like Mohammed said, opportunities if there is repairs that need to be done on it. Um, Public Works does a pretty good job, um, keeping track of the valves and, and all that stuff. But this is, this is definitely a planning document for us to be able to use in the future to make decisions. And so, um, and of course you definitely have, um, opportunity. Once we refine the scope and the fee, it'll come back to you as a personal services agreement, um, to execute, um, but really, so that we could move forward with it. So, any questions?
My only comment was making sure John captured that we didn't need to look at the code concern that Sharon noted.
Or is the ownerships?
Yeah, sounds like that we need to get that sorted out, so.
Yeah, I'll have to work with the city attorney on it. It just, it needs to be.
Yeah. Make sure that we took that away from that. Council Hubbard, do you have any other questions?
Pay for it. I mean, how many you got? What, one developer wants us put in fixed before you let him go?
Um, we've had, um, developers over the past few years, maybe two or three.
Some lots down there, they're pretty nice, probably.
Yeah, and some of them have wanted to, I think, subdivide and, and stuff like that, so. Um, it, it just depends. I mean, right now, you know, building isn't and that taken a little slack, but once it does get back, uh, we, we need to be able to answer those questions and right now we can't.
One thing I see is this is yeah, that's a something to do, but it's not priority yet, I don't think. I'm, you know, I'm a developer. I, I'd like to do it too. But, um, we've got so many other pressing issues that, uh,
Mohammed and Sharon, do you believe this would be taking away from pressing issues that Public Works is seeing?
Pressing issues like projects, you mean? Or do we identify like a different priority to do for example?
Do you believe this is, that this being at the top of the to-do list right now is going to take away from other projects that need attention right now? Especially two hundred K.
Yeah, well, our top priority is June thirtieth.
Yes, yes it is.
My top priority is.
And we have a lot of projects. I don't see it taking away from, from anything. Of course, that's a decision I leave with, with the council.
Well, we look to you guys for your expertise and from everything you've presented to me, I have no reason to believe it's taking away from any current issues that Public Works is already taking care of and working on. So I just.
It's not, um, and so we'd like to be proactive also, so um, trying to do this when a developer comes up in the next few months and says they wanna connect and be like, oh wait, we don't have a capacity study. I have no idea. Have to wait another several months, so it's just being proactive. Right now, we, we have the budget to do it. And so that's kind of why we decided to go ahead and do it.
Any questions? He's not here. I mean. I was like, where is he at? But. Yeah, and I'm like, wow, you're really deep. Deep in thought right now. You're good? You don't have any questions? Nope, thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
We're gonna have to do that the rest of the season. And I thought you were really deep in thought at that one. Um, alright, number seven, um, timber insurance proposal. One before, oh, thank you. Man, I am.
Bored.
Geez, I'm all over the map today. A request from Comcast, uh, for a letter of support for brown and equity access and deploy.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll give you a, that's a little brief on this. Uh, in your fact, there is a sample letter model of support for the crowdfunding, which we've talked about the crowdfunding, you know about this, because we've been talking about this as part of our works with the county and, I mean, developing a community system with, with the county. Six hundred and eighty-eight million dollars coming to the state for, uh, to help underserved properties get, you know, connected to internet. And part of that application, the crowdfunding application is that people that are applying for it get points or extra higher scoring if they can demonstrate that they have a certain percentage of the anchor businesses and in the school district. And so Comcast is going out doing their work to, to try to get these letters. RSG, SNG, that's been helping the county and us out on this local network. It's also gonna be doing this work. They're just, Comcast is a little bit ahead of us. Both good applications, both will be requesting a letter. You probably get both of them done tonight if you wanna just authorize that. But, yeah, so this is part of an application process that gets them go further in their, in their scoring and potential funding.
Council Gunnerson, do you have any questions?
That's Brandon. No, I don't think so. If it's something about the internet or anything, I don't have a clue.
Fair enough. I don't have any questions. I've been following the project for a long time, so I think it's well needed. And when you go to legal board and cities and lots of cities across the state are looking at the same type of funding and, you know, COVID was a big eye-opener for all of us who had to do everything online and kids having to, you know, go to school and doctor's appointments and everything. So it's definitely something that, you know, we're looking at across the state, so.
Yeah, the biggest difference between Comcast as a private company and the RSG, you know, the work that the county's doing is county's gonna have proposing a open access network, so it'll build one strand of fiber that anybody can connect to, rather, and it's an open access model. Comcast will keep theirs private, so. I think we would wanna support both applications as council.
So it's done with mirrors, really.
Alright, um, alright, there's no, no other additional comments on it? Alright, um, so then we are at number seven. Thank you Kathy for the timber insurance proposal, three million coverage. John, that's all you.
Alright, I'm.
Reached out to Hagan Hamilton, David.
Thank you.
Right, so been in contact with John and I'm, again, David Wasslinco at Hagan Hamilton, um, talking about the timber quotes. Um, uh, unfortunately, I don't have a formal proposal back from the carrier yet. Um, I think I believe we got the footprints of the area confirmed with John, that was yesterday or the day before. Uh, so I should have something back soon. When I do, we'll, we'll get that provided to you. Um, they did give us, and it was called an indication, uh, which is basically, uh, their best estimate based on the information that they had at the time. We have a three million dollar limit requested. Minimum deductible and that is gonna be approximately two hundred thousand dollars. And premium amounts gave us a range of seventy-five to ninety thousand dollars per year. Um, I don't have the specific forms attached to that just yet either, so I can't go into a lot of detail, but essentially, if we have a wildfire that takes out any timber in that area, those would be the limits, the deductibles we could look at. Um, do you have questions as far as? And there's all of information here just yet, so I apologize about that, but the carrier couldn't get back to me in time.
We've had timber there for, I don't know how long. We've never had insurance on the timber?
Not as long as I've been working with you guys, no.
Yeah, I think I asked about it like about a month or so, asked about if we're covered for a asset of the city.
I think there was a request a few years back and at that time the cost was such that it was declined, so. And it's, it's not an insignificant amount of money, but there's also a lot of timber, so kind of determining the, uh, return on your investment and premium, if it's better to pay for the insurance or to put some money aside to self-insure for it, so. Uh, but once we have the actual final figures on this and we have the forms attached, we'll get that proposal over and we can just come back to your next work session and go in more detail.
I'm curious to know also, like, will there be restrictions on the land and access to the land? The insurance will require if they're insuring.
Restrictions, I can look into that for sure. Um, nothing that was provided to me thus far. Uh, but again, once I have the actual policy.
So that, yeah, when you come back, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Policy include, uh, salvage and replanting?
I'll get that answered for you as well.
And what that replant is, if it's like a three. What that replant is, it means different things to different forestry.
Yeah, exactly. And, and if, if there's replanting involved, I'm sure it would be up to whatever Oregon law is gonna require and that, so. But we'll, I'll verify that for sure. Any other specific questions to follow back up with?
Um, I do have another question, uh, if there's required fire breaks around that, around the property. That, I think it's gonna be probably in the underwriting or whatever it may be with the. Probably gonna come out with like what you can use.
Yeah, there's gonna be a list of exclusions, just like with any other property policy, so we'll, we'll come back with those and let you know exactly what's, what's covered, what's not, how it's covered, how they make that determination. Um, most, the, the reason why the map is so important is because that footprint's how they determine their pricing. Um, and they also have basically ability to do some satellite photography to see where the damaged areas are and calculate evaluation, so. Um, yeah, so I'm, I'm expecting that probably early next week at the very latest, and then I'll reach back out to John and we'll we'll sell up to their more detailed, uh, presentation for that, yeah.
I appreciate you coming in today.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
In this, uh, another thing to put on our agenda to look at.
Value of the timber on that property, uh, roughly, what will be insured? Three million?
Thirty million is what we've got price for.
That was big, yeah.
It's not for the catastrophic fire that took out the whole, all twenty-four hundred acres, but.
That's a part that like I was thinking about is the fact that, you know, it takes thirty to forty years to actually achieve our fest, you know, investment so that we could actually harvest it. So then that ROI comes into play, but we have something happens there that, that is gone for thirty to forty years. That's the, the reality of it.
It's the reason not to depend on it.
Exactly. That's a really good point, John. Exactly. That is a good point. I actually like that perspective a lot.
David, you said, but seventy, seventy-five to seventy-five thousand, ninety-eight thousand a year.
Yeah, the, the range is seventy-five to ninety. When they give us an indication, they're usually pretty, um, conservative, so I would expect to be on the lower end of that range, but you know, there's always the chance they could go a little bit higher than what they're expecting, but, um, yeah, I would, I would assume closer to seventy-five to ninety, fingers crossed for that, for sure. Any other questions?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll be in touch soon.
Okay, number eight, so what's report from the city administrator? Oh, you, John.
So lots going on, the, uh, you know, we're wrapping up the Riverwalk project. If you haven't had a chance to, uh, take a look at the railings or going landscape, because plants everywhere, it's really hundreds of plants, uh, going in right now. Um, looks wonderful. Just kinda start to see how it's gonna look. Thirteen nights is, we're struggling that opening date. Hydro seeded, grass is new, we're about two months away, so hopefully that's well established by them. Hoping to do thirteen nights in the downtown core. We'd like to do it beginning in June fifth. And working with Treadway to, to find a suitable place to do it. That might chase the construction around a little bit. They have is that they're proposing is to set it up like we had for Christmas ships. The plaza right here in the corner there, that is potentially a possibility. We've looked at some other models about doing it, either maybe down like Walton or maybe the end of Strand or, or up here.
I just spoke to Brittany on the phone before I came and she said you guys had recently talked about doing it down at the end of the road here, so, okay.
All options, but it's, it's gonna be fairly fluid and the timing of the construction is going.
We're hoping to not have to cut two dates out.
We're hoping to not, we're gonna get all those dates in.
We need to think we're gonna know, John, if we're gonna have to do that. Just ask.
It's, unfortunately, it's almost real time, but we're feeling really good about the schedule right now because of things coming together. Now, but we want to build in some contingencies and not overpromise. But, I can't really add to your question.
No, no, that was, that was good, I, I just, we have Wana who has, um, is sponsoring the stage for thirteen nights and they, uh, Treadway, I had recently met with them to, you know, we meet every month to talk and just make sure that we're they're getting everything that they need, and one of their concerns was trying to make sure that they were um, meeting the needs of the sponsorship with the dates, so if dates are cut out, then we need to talk about what we're gonna offer them to make sure that they're getting a fair deal with their sponsorship fee, so we're just trying to be creative about the possibility of eliminating dates from that contract and what that could look like, we even talked about possibly um allowing them to sponsor the stage at Citizens Day because we do have a band there and a stage there, so we're, we're we're being fluid and Treadway's working really well on, you know, working really hard on trying to accommodate every night possible and keep our sponsors happy and um, making sure it's fair. Thank you for meeting with them. Yeah, it's great.
So on the streets and utility projects, there's, you know, that's following about the same schedule. We've opened up the, the three legs of the intersection here up on First and St. Helen's, that last one is coming together, they're getting the the uh, the seat walls, had temporary road blocked, their progress to be able to do some of the other things, so they're, they're moving pretty fast on that. And we're, we're feeling good about that schedule. The paper bands in, in front of City Hall here on Strand, down at Callet's. The little channels you see in the, there's bricks that kind of lay in there, those need, there was wood kind of in those places we should, it's now closed. And it will not be open until it's their, the paper bands are in, had a five to seven day cure and the sealer, everything they need to cuz it sits on a mortar base, we don't want the bricks to just pop right out. Not as simple here, so. Special thanks to everyone impacted for the construction and thank you for their patience. Let me, you know, wrap this up and close it out. And we have been seeing some pretty firm interest in development in the riverfront, so we're, that's company that wants to come and talk to the council about uh entering into negotiations, um, more details on that to come, they're still in a draft form. But that's exciting, a lot of the uses that we're desiring to have there, they're looking to build, so that's, uh, really great. Uh, next Monday, boards and commissions appreciation is at the community center at five thirty, five thirty. Uh, I want to talk to you about the Juana's Parade on June twenty-first, uh, this year's theme is showing off your wheels. And here's past, we've done some more about city, um, anybody wanna drive green truck?
I wish I could drive a manual, but I can't, but I was going to request that I could drive a different city truck, a nice city truck on behalf of the city.
We were thinking.
You wanna drive the green truck and all the. Automatic city truck?
Have a good clutch leg, that thing's uh. Cramp you up. So we're thinking the rec van, police obviously will be leading it, some other piece, some public works vehicles. And it's time to test the truck. Don't turn me loose without a practice run.
Yeah.
I would like to drive one of the city trucks still.
Sounds like there's interest in that, Crystal's has a soft start on coordinating all this, so we're.
Not here anymore, but, I'm in, Crystal, you can hear me.
Second that.
Working with Glory on the proposed budget, we're pretty far along in those discussions and I think we'll be well prepared for the May first, uh, first budget meeting. Um, earlier today, we met with P G E on the substation progress, and that's coming together, what we're having is a, um. There's, there's two agreements initially, one of them will be an agreement between P G and the city over this, um essence called still funding, the strategic industrial land trade, yes, funding. And how, how that funding flows, and then P G will provide all the money, that money will have to flow through the city in order for the hit the grant money back, so we have two agreements, one of them you'll see probably at the first or second meeting in May is the, the, the sub-agreement, and then also the contract with Oregon Business Development Department to do enter into that grant slash loan. Funding, so, there's a lot, there's a lot of pieces around that, a lot of pieces around creating the parcel for the substation. Finalizing the conversation about the parcel with the project Arcadia, there's easements that we're fine tuning, getting pretty close with that. Lot, lot of work going on, we had scenes about that, and, you know, ultimate goal is to get the substation built. Have they wants, you know, redundancy and abilities to serve it from different directions, so there's some easements around that, and, um.
Do we run into any risk on, like, participating in these grants, and we're not, that seems, a lot of it is uncertain that this.
That is entirely the purpose of the sub-agree.
Okay.
Um, Treadway's feeling pretty good about the sand line, the Sandcastle Festival coming back, so there's logistics to work out around that. At this point, it seems like it's gonna be a go. Um, recently attended the Growing Real Oregon Mixer event over at Beyond the Forest, and it was really well attended, it was, uh, probably a dozen or more entrepreneurs kind of came in, mixed and mingled, and a lot of people kind of flowed through over the couple hours that it lasted. And just to see that, that good work and seeing that program be successful. Um, lastly, I, I did meet with the senior center board on May seventh and Dan Brown, myself and the board, and everybody seems to be in agreement that the things are working well, they, that way they are, and they'd like to renew the way, at least the way it is. And that's what we were earlier talking about, having the food pro- program subleased out of the senior center, have two separate leases, they'd rather just keep it together. And that's, that's the path that everybody wants to go, so you'll see a lease renewal document coming to you sometime before the June expiration. That's it.
All right, well, uh, then we are going to adjourn this council work session uh, at uh four fifteen and go into an executive session.
A little bit of time constraint, we do have executive session, uh, one of the attorneys that needs to come into that's not gonna be available till closer to five o'clock, so we were thinking maybe you'd wanna break now and maybe start at like four forty-five.
I just, I'll have to do this after executive session. Have a, uh, you have a public hearing at five thirty?
Yeah.
Five thirty, yeah.
So. Are there discussions that we can discuss without that attorney present first?
That's not the way we're, we're kind of queuing it up. Take the mail of four forty-five, five at the latest, we thought we'd maybe start around.
He's available at four forty-five. Is that what you're saying?
Said five.
Is it five?
He told me he might be four forty-five at five for sure.
Um, so there is, uh, other topics besides, who, who is that, that, or what?
Are we adjourned right now, or we?
No, no, and.
That's good, I guess, I, now I'm just trying to know where we're at here in this discussion.
Um. So I, I think you maybe you could take a ten, fifteen minute break and then start at four thirty? And that way you get a break and then we start at four thirty, cuz if he's available at five.
When he'll come on, when he's available.
Yeah. Okay.
How does that sound?
So we are going to adjourn this meeting and go into executive session at four thirty.
At four thirty. And did you read the script for?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on what we're doing. Um, so we'll go into executive session, so following this conclusion of the work session, we are going to, um, go into executive session um, to discuss real property transactions under O R S one nine two six six zero two E. Exempt records, confidential attorney, client privilege memo under O R S one nine two six six zero two F. And consult with council potential litigation under O R S one nine two six six zero two H, representative of the nude media, staff, um, and other persons as approved shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the council chambers.